Good evening. I'd like to bring the February meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Our first order of business would be our call to order and roll call, Mrs. Caldwell, please.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans is participating via phone. He's in Florida with the band this week. And he is here.
Mrs. Di Battista?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mrs. Krajewski? Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Hager?
Here.
Could we have the invocation, please, Mrs. Di Battista? And pledge.
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Point of order, Mrs. Hager?
Yes, Mrs. Floyd.
Yes, when we were doing the roll call, I realized that Mr. Evans is on the speakerphone, but he has to acknowledge, we have to be able to hear him as well as he hear us in order to participate electronically.
I think they unlocked that audio. Mr. Evans?
Yes?
He's here. He's good.
Okay. Okay, so we'll begin with our reports from our student representatives, Matthew Cleaver and Abby Marola.
At Glenonah School on January 15th, the 3rd grade went to a respect assembly. JP Mascow and Sons represented informations about respecting yourself and the environment. They focused on ways to reduce, reuse, and recycle items. They proceeded to play games with the students and gave them prizes and rewards. They also were given information about the poster contest, where the grand prize was a new laptop. It was enjoyed by students and teachers.
The kindergarten academy is asking that you please send in new books to be donated to Children's Hospital in memory of a former kindergarten academy student, Ryan Hammer. Ryan's family continues to support the patients at Children's Hospital by supplying their playroom and waiting areas with books each year. Thanks in advance for helping with this worthwhile project. The kindergarten academy is also pleased to be hosting a children's author, Lindsay Barrett George, at the kindergarten. All the classes will have an opportunity to learn about the author's craft, including writing and illustrating, when they meet with Ms. George. Mrs. Hokinson and Mrs. Ward will be facilitating the day, and there will be additional information regarding purchasing a book signed by the author.
At Norwood School, the middle school held its annual spelling bee on January 16th. First place winner was Alex Sun, and second place winner was Madison Brown. These students are now qualifying for the Delaware County Spelling Bee to be held at Newman University on February 21st. On January 29th, we also held our annual DJ dance party for students who participated in the fall fundraiser. Everybody had a great time.
A prospect in January, the faculty and students designated a special day to wear pink in support of a staff as they battle cancer. Our students and staff raised over $600 for charity.
Kindergarten School hosted its annual bingo night on February 6th. They had a great turnout of students, staff members, and community members. Thank you to all who contributed to make this event successful. On March 14th, the 8th graders will be hosting Applebee's fundraiser from A to 10. Come out and show your support.
At the high school, Interboro co-hosted the District 12 Chorus Festival at Immaculata University on January 22nd. Although the concert had to be moved due to the weather, students from 48 districts across Chester and Delaware County gathered to work with Dr. Thomas Lloyd and performed for parents and community members. Thank you to our choir director, Ms. Canous, for putting this festival together. Also, Ms. Canous took the high school concert choir and select choir to the Upper Darby Invitational on Friday, January 23rd. Interboro High School was one of five schools chosen to perform at this special event. Also, the 8th grade visited on January 22nd and 23rd from the community schools that came to the high school to visit and see what our high school has to offer them for the next four years here at Interboro. Everything went well, and a special thank you to all the teachers and clubs who helped make this day a great success. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Mrs. Di Battista, public comments, please. Joyce Anderson?
My name is Joyce Anderson. I reside in the borough of Norwood. At one time, I sat on the school board of the Interboro School District, so I realize that your job is somewhat tasking. Recently, I was made aware of a situation that has disturbed me greatly. The Interboro Education Support Professionals has been without a contract since June 30th of 2013. There is approximately 150 members. Seventy-four percent of them members live within the district. These ladies and gentlemen are the front line for the teachers. They assist them in the educational and daily needs of the students in the classroom. Those who deal specifically with special education must also have a two-year degree or an equivalent, and 20-hour mandated special education training on a regular basis. They get no vacation, no sick days, no benefits to speak of. And for this, it's $9.35 an hour. You've got to be kidding me. It has also come to my attention that other school districts in the Delaware County start their beginning salary there for the same positions that all these wonderful people hold, for a much higher salary. It is time for Interboro now to get this right. I am from the corporate world. I worked for the federal government. And I know specifically that in the federal world, it's a little bit different than being in the school district business. We got cost of living raises, merit raises, and from what I understand, this isn't even a consideration here in our district. And yet, all of the people, they come to work every day, they do their jobs, and they do it quite eloquently. Again, they're the front line for the teachers. I'm quite sure that those of you who are still in the working world are receiving benefits, vacations. Some of yous may get time off for special needs. I'd like to find out if any one of you would be able to raise a family on $9.35 an hour, because I'm quite sure I couldn't. There had been meetings in the past. The last one, I understand, was on February 3rd, and again, it was really not productive. This should have all been taken care of quite some time ago. We've already settled the teachers' contracts. It's my understanding that we have, the secretaries don't have a contract. This is unheard of. Many years ago, we never let this slide. We worked together as a team. We, the people of the Interboro School District, should be able to have some type of input into this. I think it's high time that you bring in other people who have worked in the corporate world. I was never an instructional aide. What I did for the government is my business. But I'll tell you right now, if you don't straighten this out, you may lose some very good quality people. I normally do not come to the board. When I walked away from the board 20 years ago, it was for a specific reason. And that reason was, we needed full-time nurses in our school. And at the time, one of the representatives on the board thought it was more important for carpeting to go into that high school. And at that time, our district was almost sued by a resident of the borough of Norwood because of no full-time nursing. So yes, I can speak a good conscience here. I look into all of your eyes. You don't know me for madam. There's two people on this board that know me. They know when I come here, I'm coming for a reason. I never show up. The last time I was in any school board meeting was probably 10 years ago. And it was a situation over at the Interboro Kindergarten Academy, and it was resolved immediately. I'm looking and hoping that each and every one of you look into your hearts and realize that the ladies and gentlemen in the district, and I don't know any of these people, maybe one, but I think it's high time to give them their just due. Each and every one of you get a cost of living raise if you're in the business world. Each and every one of you get a merit raise. I wouldn't doubt it, whether you're salaried or not. And if you're a supervisor, or you're a manager of a specific department, just rest assured I know for a fact you's getting. So I'm not naive to the system. I'm quite smart. I would behoove you all, look forward to the 1% raise. All of these people should be given a raise that you would have gotten. A cost of living raise, the cost of living in the federal government, I believe it's 2.3%, and even could be higher, depending on the state that you're in. Here's another thought, too. If you go out and you hire a young person to babysit your children, that babysitter's getting $10 an hour, and after midnight, it's time and a half. So I've had a lot of heart thinking about this for the last two days. I've been beyond upset about it. I have children that attend the Norwood School. I'm raising my grandchildren and have for many years, and it's very well-known in the school. And they know my allegiance is to every staff member in that building, and it doesn't matter to me who they are or what their profession is. So before you cross your Ts and dot your Is on any contract for the future, and it doesn't matter to me if it's for these people or if it's for the secretaries, think twice. Because these people can go to other districts and get more money and don't have to worry about this, because they're very well-respected. You may respect these people, you need to prove it now, and give them exactly what they need. I want to thank you all very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Just in response to Mrs. Anderson and bringing up the contract, we do have a signed tentative agreement with our support personnel group, which we're very happy to have arrived at. And we had a little glitch last week, so other than that, it was just signed today. So we're very happy and very grateful for our employees for the good job that they do. Sheri Ekman?
How are you? I am enshadowing what Miss Anderson said. I'm not exactly sure, is there a signed contract? Is that what I'm hearing?
Mrs. Hager, just to clarify, we have a signed tentative agreement-
Tentative?
Between the district-
Between the district.
And the leadership of the union that was signed on February 3rd.
Okay, on February 3rd.
And it was also the deal that was recommended by the state mediator.
Okay, very good. Because I come from a parent aspect. I also am a paraprofessional, however it is in another district. My son requires a paraprofessional to read to him based on his 504 plan. The paraprofessional that reads to him is truly a vital part of his education. Everybody here is a vital part of our education. You come here after a hard day. You are putting in your hours at work and putting in your hours here. Our teachers are very, very rooted in our students, as well as our principals. However, when I found out that there was not a contract that had been solidified, and everyone had signed and agreed to it, it did kind of raise a little bit of anxiety in me. Because, first of all, they are our front line, as Miss Anderson said, and I truly do not want to repeat what it is that she said. I think we all understand that. And second of all, if we're a community and we are working together, then everybody needs to know the value. And the value isn't necessarily always placed in monetary. It's placed in a thank you. It's placed in a congratulations. It's based and placed in your principal saying, you know what, you're doing a good job, way to go. But at the same time, unfortunately, paraprofessionals, their role may have been for someone who was, you know, needed a part-time job years ago. That unfortunately, in this day and age, has changed. And in all honesty, the rate, I'm not exactly sure what the rate is, but from what I understand, it is not at all what it could be and what it should be. And being a paraprofessional myself to a student who has a traumatic brain injury, that parent is putting their whole trust and being, not in the teacher, but in an individual who shows up every day and gets paid a good $10 to $15 less. And I do have my degree in education, and that's why I was selected for this child. But we also have paraprofessionals who have degrees here, and they are selected for children to work with them because they have the experience and because they have the degree. And we all know, if you have experience and you have a degree, that equals a monetary gain. And so therefore, I'm just asking if things are not solidified yet, if everybody hasn't signed the contract yet, if there's any way in the budget they can get a cost of living raise, that would be great and wonderful. If there's any way that they could get more vacation days, or if they can get paid snow days or paid holidays, just something, because they don't get paid over the summer, and we all know that when we sign up for it. But at the same time, if our faculty is getting paid for snow days, but we aren't, but we make them up and get paid, and the faculty makes them up and gets paid, there's, you know, a big difference there. So I really believe in my heart, showing our powers just how important they are to us, the best way to do it is to give them a little bit more. If it can't be monetary one way or another, like I said, maybe it can be in snow days, maybe it can be in offering a benefit package, maybe it can be, you know, they pay into their benefit package, as I do in the district that I am in. So something that would move forward, maybe not so much as I've said, in a financial way or a financial gain, but something that would be equal to that down the road. So I just want to thank you for your time in listening to me babble.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to reiterate that this board values all of its employees. We have been working nonstop. Mr. Razzie has been the board member that has been negotiating, at the table negotiating. The board's been informed of all negotiations with all of the groups. It is our heartfelt wish that they would have been settled, you know, before they expired, but that was not to be. But the board is united in appreciating our employees and hoping for a very swift and fair resolution of labor disputes. Before we move on, I just wanted to read a short statement. It has had to do with the Federal Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. It limits the district's ability to release in any manner personally identifiable information about students of the district without parental consent. Under state privacy laws, it is prudent to refrain from discussing individual students' incidents or student behavior or discipline in a public meeting. To do so would violate these laws, as well as the privacy rights of a student and his or her family. The board must comply with those laws and wishes to also respect the privacy of its students and families. So it is, we're simply not allowed to discuss individual student issues, individual students in a public meeting. I just wanted to let the community know that we are constrained by federal law, not that we would want to do it anyway. Thank you. So we can then move on to motion 5.1. Mrs. Di Battista?
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on January 21st, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Question? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, at the work session, I brought up that one item that needed to be changed. Was it changed?
Mrs. Caldwell? Mrs. Floyd, Mrs. Caldwell assured us that that was taken care of in the minutes. Thank you. All those in favor of passing motion 5.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 781, 80. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Thanks. Solicitors report, Mrs. Serini.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. This month, my office has been working on policy review for the district, and that's pretty much what I have to report. It's been a slow month.
Thank you. We have quite a few, at the end of the meeting, policy revisions and adoptions. Can we move on to 7.1? Mrs. Di Battista?
Motion that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending January 31st, 2015 be approved.
Second.
Can you hear that? Someone's on Main Street. Can somebody check to see if there's a problem? There is a problem. It can be corrected. Yeah, he's in Florida. That's the problem. Mr. Evans, can you mute that? Mr. Evans? I'm sorry. I have a little glitch. Where are we?
Shall I repeat the motion?
Please.
Motion that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending January 31st, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There it goes. 8-0. Motion 7.2, please.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $3,996,044.23 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0. 7.3, please.
Motion that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0.
Aye.
Do we have any correspondence, Mrs. Di Battista?
We do not.
Thank you. We'll move to committee reports, and I'll begin with the Finance Committee report. We were, we're, of course, are hard at it with budget. Budget projections at this time of year change every month. We have to solidify how much we're going to be paying for health care, how much we're going to be getting from the various governmental agencies. So this was, and of course, increases in salaries for next year. So we are working on it, and we're hoping that as time goes by, the figures will look better. We also received financial statements, as we do every month. That concludes my report. Mr. Eckert, please.
Thank you. GBO was held immediately following the Finance Committee. There were several discussions that evening. One of them was dealing with time clocks. It was just a discussion item. It is more for accurate timing, for keeping time of employees, but more for accurate payroll. Again, it is just a discussion item. More will follow later. There was a discussion on vendor services. This school district, from time to time, has many different needs for inspections and minor services. Mr. Rohoff gave us a nice spreadsheet of what we have spent over the past year. It was very helpful, and it was very responsible for us to look at it and to understand exactly what minor vendors we are using. There was a first reading policy and a policy reading for revisions. And there was a cyber education plan update presented by Ms. Hagerty. This was very informative. This district spends an awful lot of money for placement of students in cyber schools provided by other vendors. This district would really like to capture some of them students and bring them back into the district. This would be an enormous tax savings to the public. We have done an awful lot of research on this. We've done an awful lot of improvement on this. So if you have children that are out there, students that are in cyber school, please give Interboro a chance. We have improved this program immensely. Again, it is a very good program. There was also a proposed registration. Last year, we had all of our students that were in kindergarten, we had them all reregister as they entered first grade. This also helps with taxpayers. It gets us a chance to actually find out what students are properly registered in the district. That will probably take place again this year, but we are discussing what grade level to do it again. Thank you. That was it.
Thanks, Mr. Eckert. Mrs. Floyd, the legislative update.
Okay, bear with me. I have a lot to say. Starting with the National School Board Association, the advocacy institute that I went to in Washington, DC, I'd like to again thank my colleagues for supporting me in going to this, because it was very, very informational. Met a lot of important people, but a lot of people throughout the state, school board members throughout the state, California, Massachusetts, Oklahoma, Kentucky, I mean, there was about 700 of us. And it's good when you go to these breakout sessions and discuss the various problems that all of us are dealing with. But the main purpose was for us to advocate for the following: reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, that would be referred to as the ESEA. We were asking that there be an increase in flexibility and authority for local school districts, and our leadership is needed to influence an ESEA reauthorization that supports local school board governance and flexibility for districts to help our public schools implement innovation, reform, and effective advancements. This would be the No Child Left Behind that we're presently dealing with. So it's time for it to be reauthorized, and we're hoping that they'll listen to us. And it seemed like, in the congressman and the senators that I talked to, they seemed very, very aware and in tuned. And the other one is maximize Title I resources. Maximizing Title I grants for disadvantaged students is critical to achieving the goals of the new law. Amplified resources are paramount to support student achievement efforts at roughly 90% of the 14,000 public school districts across the nation that utilize Title I grants. The other, federal funding for education. We were asking for fully fund, to fully fund the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is IDEA. And increasing the federal share of funding for special education is vital and should be addressed before considering future funding for newly created programs that may not have proven results for program effectiveness. Current federal appropriations provides roughly 16% of the cost to educate students with disability. Back when this was initiated, I think it was about 40 years ago, they were supposed to contribute or reimburse 40- to contribute or reimburse 40% of the cost, and it's now down to 16%. So they slacked off quite a bit. Enact the IDA Full Funding Act, the legislation would establish a 10-year glide path for full funding that will provide for the necessary resources to address the unique learning needs of the more than 6.5 million children with disabilities preschool through age 21. And another thing we talked about was the Reauthorization of the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act. And what really came out of this was, across the nation, what we are mandated to do with the lunches that we are providing, 90% of the lunches are thrown in the trash, or the students aren't even buying them. This was nationwide. This wasn't just Pennsylvania or Interboro. So they realize that they have to go back and look at that and see what they can do. They think that, should provide local school boards with opportunities to improve the law and administrative policy. That was NSBA and my trip to Washington. I could tell you a lot more, but I don't want to take up too much time. All right, and the legislative report from Delaware County Legislative Group. The top stories or items that we talked about, PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, testified in support of bill to end Keystone exams as graduation requirement. I hope that happens. Governor Wolf proposes gas severance tax plan to fund education. And then some things that have already happened. The House adopted School Financial Reporting Bill, and the House panel approved property tax reduction proposal, and the member sought for PSBA Platform Committee. They're looking, PSBA is looking for board members that'll serve on their platform committee. So that, and the meeting that we took, that we had, took place last Wednesday at 7:30 at the IU in Morton. And we just received a reminder that our March meeting will be on March 4th instead of the 11th. And some other dates that were sent out, on April 8th, our meeting will feature Senator Jamie Santora as a guest. And they've tentatively, tentatively scheduled Wednesday evening, April 29th, 9th, for a regional forum on school funding to be held at the Springfield School District. And I'll have more details because we really want the public to come, not just board members. We need the public to come and speak up, public officials and what have you, you know, community, public officials, as far as the school funding. They have to change it. They have to do something about it. And then our annual legislative breakfast will be held on Friday, May 15th, at the Springfield Country Club, and that's where we have local legislators come, and we tell them more things that they need to know, and make sure that they're up to date with the facts and figures on the various issues that affect our districts. So, let's see. That's it for right now, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Evans prepared a report, which I will read instead of Mr. Evans trying to read it through the phone. The report is for the Delaware County Community College. Topics included spring enrollment. First of all, the meeting was held on January 28th. Topics included, spring enrollment is down at the community college a few percentage points from expectations. Dr. Parker rolled out one new initiative, which was distance learning. The college intends to provide 35 courses in business, English, humanities, foreign languages, education, engineering, social sciences, and history, as well as allied health as online opportunities. So that would be another avenue for our students to take advantage of the reduced tuition at community college because we do support, we're a contributing district to the community college. Reappointments to board positions included James Gaffney, David Brosman, Ellen Reeve, Michael Rank, and Raymond Toto. One new vacancy on their board, which they'll be getting new information about on possible candidates. They also discussed possible dates for next fall's Board Appreciation Dinner. The next meeting is scheduled for March 25th. Dual enrollment for Interboro students, another program that we participate in at the community college, stands at 3 for summer 2, 12 for the fall, and 18 for spring. Two success stories to recognize. Amber Ott and Cheyenne Hand have both successfully completed quite a few, few dual enrollment courses at the college, and both have been accepted into the college's very competitive nursing program for the fall of 2015. Both these young ladies have taken full advantage of the dual enrollment program and are, are well on their way to an associate's degree. Congratulations. That concludes Mr. Evans' report. And Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Delaware County Intermediate Unit School Board Directors met February 4th. It was approved for a mobile fingerprinting unit, approved for partnership with the Riverview IU 6. It also was approved for a contract with Chester Upland School District for the DCIU to provide Title I professional development. Let's see. Approval contract with the Philadelphia School Districts, with the DCIU to provide language services. Also approved a contract with the Connections Educational LLC Commonwealth Connections Academy Charter School. Phew, got it. Okay. And then the last thing is, we're going to be having, it was approved for, to use the Interboro High School for their practical nursing program graduation tomorrow at 6:00. So if anybody can attend, it'll be open to the public. For any more information, go to www.dciu.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Can we move on to motion 10, Mrs. DiBattista?
Whereas the following matters are presented for action by the Interboro Board of School Directors, therefore be it from the Office of Personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved. They begin on page 2 and end at the top of page 5.
Second.
That is correct. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from Board members on motion 10? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. In this motion, 10.11, is approving the retirements of several people. And I'd like to speak in regards to these people. I, I'm sorry, but I've known them for many, many years. Phyllis Regan, Administrative Assistant to the Director of Facilities. She has been here for 32 years, and she has worked many, many positions over the years. She knows the inner workings of this district from the administrative offices, and she is going to be sorely missed. She is a dedicated, old-time worker, so to speak. Work ethics, unbelievable. So Phyllis, I wish you well in your new endeavors. And I have to tell a little joke because my name is Phyllis. We refer to her as the good Phyllis, and I was the bad Phyllis. Okay. Okay. Then there's Eleanor Claus, Administrative Assistant, IT Transportation at the Administration Building. 19 years of service. She also has held various positions in the district, and she's another one with the old-time work ethics and dependability, very precise in everything she does. She is going to be sorely missed. And I wish I could say no, that they can't retire, but they're entitled to it. They put in their time. And I wish Eleanor also a lot of success in whatever she chooses to do. And Joanne Alexandron, she's a part-time clerical support at the Administration Building with six years. I really don't know her that well, but I've gotten to know her from going into the Administration Building, and a very lovely, friendly person. I didn't say anything about Mr. Thompson. My kids didn't have him in school. I did, I would see him in the hallways and talk to him before or after a meeting or what have you, and I'm to understand, 29 years of service, I'm to understand that he was a very respected employee also. So with that said, I wish them all the best.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. And I think that the Board would certainly echo our sentiments for our retirees, wish them well in the next phase of their life, thank them so much for the service to our district and our students. Any other questions or comments on motion 10? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion 11, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached teacher salaries per the Interboro Education Association contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about motion 11? This requires a roll call vote. Mrs. Caldwell, please.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DiBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion carries 8-0. Motion 12, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve, oop, sorry about that. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the reclassification of the following people.
Second.
On page 5, ending on page 6. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 13 on page 6, please. Yes.
From the Office of Curriculum Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, beginning at the bottom of page 6 and ending on page 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for motion 13. Any questions or comments from Board members? Question? Yes. Mrs. Floyd?
Um, refresh my memory. What exactly is this technology conference about?
Mrs. Riley?
IST, the IST Conference that coming, that's coming in June, is the National Technology Conference. It's only housed in Philadelphia. I don't even know if it's been hosted in Philadelphia before. This is an opportunity for all of our administrators to attend as long as, along with some of our technology teachers. So we're hoping we can go.
It's a national convention?
Yes, conference.
Great.
Technology conference, yes.
Great. Any other questions or comments about motion 13? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0. Motion 14 at the bottom of page 7.
From the Office of Special Education, Pupil Services, motion that the following items be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions on motion 14? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 15, please, Mrs. DiBattista. You can.
From the Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on motion 15? Hearing none.
Question?
Yes. Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. When it was explained to us, and when Mr. Eckert gave the report, this is going to also help with payroll, and they're not, it's not a time, it's not like a time clock.
Point of order, Mrs. Hager?
Yes, Mr. Razzie.
I believe this is just for cameras at the high school. Is that correct? There's nothing about time clocks in this? It's just cameras at the high school, correct?
What's the time and parking controls, though?
That's the company that installs and monitors.
Okay, sorry. We need to vote, right? All those in favor of motion 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 16 from the Office of Technology?
Motion that the following items be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for motion 16. Are there any questions or comments from Board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 17?
From the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments about motion 17 from Board members?
Comment?
Mr. Eckert?
17.4 is a reallocation of funds. Just so everybody understands, we have two projects. One is the security cameras. The other one is for lighting. Both of these projects were approved during, when we passed the budget in June for fund balance. One project came under, the other one came over. So it's the same amount of money. We are just transferring, just designating funds from one project to another. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Eckert. Any other questions or comments on motion 17? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 18, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the Interboro High School Program of Studies book for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about motion 18?
Comment?
Mr. Eckert?
I would like to thank the administration and the staff for putting in a lot of time in upgrading this book for the courses. Just so everyone is aware, and I am not here to debate the Keystone exams, but the course study book was redone so that we would have all the information and the courses available to aid our students in passing this test. We are not basing our education off of tests, but passing the Keystone exam test is a requirement of graduation, and we want to give our students in Interboro the best opportunity and the best education that they have. So with that, there was a lot of work that went into this book. Please, parents, take the time to look it over. I cannot stress enough, and that once your child reaches ninth grade, it's very difficult for them to move from one track to another. So if you have students in middle school, take a walk up to the high school, take a look at this book, and see exactly where your students need to be when they get into ninth grade. It will help you immensely. Thank you. And thank you again to the staff for putting this together.
Thanks, Mr. Eckert. I concur in your congratulations. Also, I'd like to, for the community to be aware that the Program of Studies book will be available online on our website tomorrow. This, of course, there, we're gearing up to register eighth-grade students into high school and the high school students into the following year, so this is appropriate time, and you can take a look at it and view it. And if you have questions, ask your, your, your child's teacher, counselor, principal. They'll be more than happy to assist you and help you. So we need a roll call vote for this. Mrs. Caldwell?
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DiBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion carries 8-0. Motion 19, please.
Motion to approve the attached independent contractor agreement amended for Charles Kokel residency officer for the 2014-2015 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments about motion 19? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 20, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the following revisions of policies in the categories of local board procedures, programs, and operations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There are first readings, second readings, revisions. There's quite a few. The administration... The administration, with the board support, has been working very hard to get our policies up to date, and we will be continuing to do this. Any other questions or comments about motion twenty? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Motion twenty-one.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the second readings of the following policies in the categories of employees, finance, and operations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Once we vote on this, it will then become an official policy of ours, and I really would like to see the students, the parents, staff, number eight hundred, operations, eight one five, acceptable use of internet, electronic mail, and network resources. This is something that's becoming a problem, not necessarily here, but again, throughout the nation. People have to be careful when you get into the social network and using the internet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Motion twenty-two, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the first readings of the following policies in the categories of programs and pupils.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Comment.
Mr. Eckert?
One of the policies that we're approving for a first reading is concussion management. This will pertain to all athletic participants, middle school, all the way up, in fact, any activity. This is really to back our coaches. So to the parents out there, if your athlete, student athlete has shows any sign of concussions during a game, there's a, this is a big protocol to protect your student, as well as the coaches, to give them more of backing from us, the board and the administration. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Any other comments about motion twenty-two? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. Any old business before the board? New business? Mrs. Riley?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. On behalf of the administration, I would like to congratulate the many retirees that are on the agenda this evening. I wish them well in their retirement, and I hope they have a very happy and healthy future. I would like to congratulate the Interboro Middle School Girls Basketball Team and the coaches, Mary Schiff and Frank Rodeo, for winning the Pennwood Middle School Basketball Tournament, beating Pennwood thirty-three to thirty in the championship game. It's quite an accomplishment for our middle school girls. On Saturday, February twenty-first, Interboro was hosting the two thousand fifteen PIA double A District Wrestling Tournament. This is the first time that Interboro has ever hosted a PIA double A District Wrestling Tournament. There are approximately twenty-one teams competing from across the eastern portion of District One. Interboro has nine student athletes participating. Special thanks to Dan Tobin and Dan Milai for laying the groundwork, and for Frank, excuse me, for Tony Mecchiarello coming in as a first-year AD and helping to set this up. So I wish them well on Saturday. On Tuesday, February twelfth, the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union rededicated the Interboro branch for its tenth anniversary. We were very fortunate to see a number of our graduates come back who were student interns at the student-operated branch. Some of those students had gone into the area of finance and even had futures, had moved into careers with Franklin Mint. So it was a wonderful rededication. We also had some board members who were able to attend, as well as Dr. Harry Jamison, who is the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union Education Foundation President. He's also an Interboro graduate and Hall of Fame recipient. Dr. Michael Platus, our former superintendent and high school principal, was also able to attend. And finally, I would like to thank Mrs. Tracy Tickner and the Norwood students for the beautiful artwork. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Any comments from board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
I would like to congratulate the Norwood Home and School on a beautiful evening, successful evening, for their Me and My Guy Dance. It, it was just wonderful seeing the girls dressed up and either their father, uncle, you know, whoever was special in their life. They were all decked out and having a fantastic time, and the decorations and food and everything was just really great. It's a nice activity that they have going over there. And I guess that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Any other board members?
Yes, Ms. Hager?
Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, you know, I don't like to say too much, but...
I'm surprised.
I would like to thank Ms. DeSantis, our principal of the kindergarten academy. You know, I drive by there every morning dropping my kids off. She's standing out there in the cold to greet our children, no matter what the weather conditions, and she always goes the extra mile. She don't send other people, she's out there personally. I want to thank you.
Very nice. Those were waiting for. Any other board members? On Monday, March second, two thousand fifteen, a finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at six o'clock PM in the boardroom of the Administration Building. Next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration on Monday, March sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty PM. And the next regular monthly meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of Interboro High School on Wednesday, March eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven PM. Good evening.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
I forgot to mention something, and I'd like to do it before we all disperse. I don't know if you've noticed, some of us are wearing this badge that says Stand Up for Public Schools. This was, everyone at the conference in Washington were wearing these or ham wristbands. And that's their motto or slogan, stand up for public education. And what better people to promote this than our staff, our parents, and our community members? We have a good public education going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Meeting adjourned.